All right, welcome to the Rutherford County School Board April 19th work session. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Sheila Breton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Breton. I'd like to invite everybody to join me in a moment of silence this evening and ask that you would remember Ms. Maxwell and her family. Thank you. Any questions on the approval of the agenda, members of the board? If not, how about approval of the consent agenda, any questions on that? Okay, spotlight on education we'll do on Thursday?
We'll do that on Thursday, along with the recognition on JRRTC Distinguished Leader Graduate Presentation.
Wonderful, looking forward to them. So the next item, Mr. Spurlock, will be number nine.
Your charter school applications. Chad Stain?
John promised me this was gonna work, so we'll see.
You have time? Nah, we're here.
I will go ahead and say that in front of you, you should have received two recommendation reports, and they are also printed for you. So the, what I have today will kind of go over the highlights of those. I also printed out some slides of survey results, in case you couldn't see it on the presentation, and a graphic that kind of shows some affiliations amongst different governing bodies, so that is what you should have printed.
Do you know any songs or anything like that?
I got, you know, a couple Easter jokes. I mean, I was afraid you were, I shouldn't have done that, so it would be the one I asked. Oh, look, right on time. Okay, here we go. Okay, so the two applications that we have before us today are for Springs Public Schools and Power Academy and American Classical Academy Rutherford. The order of presentation is just the order we receive the applications, so just in case there's any questions on that. As a reminder, statewide, the laws changed a couple years ago, so all LEAs are open to receiving applications. We did not necessarily seek these two out, they kind of sought us out. So that is how we ended up with these two applications before us today. Some terminology that is used in the recommendation report, as well as in the presentation, is related to the charter application process. And at any time as we're going through this, please stop me if you have questions on terms. But the ones that seem most relevant for today are the following. So an authorizer would be the local body that approved the application. So if we, as an LEA, authorized one or both of these schools, we would become the authorizer. We are currently going through the authorizing process. If we denied one or both of these applications, and then it went before the Charter Commission, which we'll kind of go through that timeline throughout this process, but then they would become the authorizer, and they would become the LEA. That's, if you remember last year, that's what happened with that application. The other two that are important are governing body and sponsor. So the governing body, it's important to remember that even if we authorize one or both of these schools, we will not be the governing body. They have their own boards and own governing bodies that make day-to-day operational decisions. We will have some oversight, but in general, we will, the decisions will not become coming before you. The sponsor is the organization that works with that governing body to then propose the school. So our two sponsors today are the American Classical and Springs. Reminder of the purpose of the charter schools, and this is part of Tennessee Code annotated, but in the application and all the recommendations and all the reports are strictly based on our criteria and the rubric before us. So according to the rubric, each applicant has to meet at least three of these purposes in order to receive a passing score on that criteria. So in this case, they do not have to meet all six to establish a need. Here we are on the timeline. So we have received a letter of intent. We've been going through the initial application review process, and we are within our 90 days where our board has to vote. So after that, we will then see how the vote goes, and we will either be looking at an amended application or an agreement. Just a quick overview of what we have done on behalf of the board. So we have gone through review and scoring training for all of the review team members. Each review team member did an independent review of one or both applications from start to finish. We then gathered together to develop questions that we wanted to address during a capacity interview. So those capacity interviews were held the last couple weeks, where we were able to kind of address clarifying questions or concerns, or just help them, ask them to clarify some things that we maybe didn't show up clearly in the application. Both those capacity interviews went well. And then we also had a week-long period of public comment and surveys, and we'll go through those results today as well. And then finally, after the capacity interview, all the review members were able to final scores, because some of those scores changed after we were able to ask some questions. Any questions on general process before I get into each of the schools? Okay, so Springs, this was the, oh, we've got a delay, I think.
I have a question. If we don't become the governing body, which I understand that, then what relationship do we have with the governing body as an LEA?
That is a good question. So if we were the authorizer, we would have some oversight in terms of processes. We could have a little more control on locations. We would be, we'd double-check enrollment targets, things of that kind of a general nature. We would then work with the sponsor to communicate with that governing body. A lot of that, too, if we were the LEA, you would work a lot of that out into the charter agreements.
Okay.
But you would not have any day-to-day input on grievances, processes, procedures. That would all be handled by them.
Okay, so we, in communicating with the community, they would need to know with charter schools, any charter school, that they're gonna have to deal with the actual charter school.
Absolutely. Yeah, so they would, they have to post meetings, just like any other governing body, but they would have to have regularly called meetings, that would have to be in the agreement, how those would be handled, how often, they'd have to be posted. But they would, they would handle all the things that are before you, budget. You wouldn't have oversight of budget. All those things would be handled by their governing body.
So in some ways, kind of like the city school system, would that kind of be a similar situation?
That might, I probably, I don't want to speak, I don't know enough probably to know how that works, but in the sense that it is another educational body within our same district that you might share students back and forth with, yeah.
Okay, that's what I meant.
So we would, we would work with them in terms of, well, either way, on students that might transfer, processes. Sometimes you collaborate on transportation, sometimes you collaborate on food services, but all that would be in the contract. And if we're not the LEA, we don't, we don't have any say at all.
Okay.
So then we would, we'd work with the Charter Commission.
Do they typically have anyone on their board that represents the local?
That is a very good question. They, they don't have to. We'll see some different governance structures, but like the Classical Academy, for instance, they don't have any local representation on their board, but they have a local body that will report to them, local issues. Springs has local membership on their board. So it's kind of either way, on the rubric is okay, but there has to be some sort of communication. I think that's even something we brought up last year, and they were like, you know, it's not something you can deny them on, it's just a comment. So the review team for Springs is there, so these were voted on by the board, and that is who reviewed the Springs application from start to finish. Just a quick summary, and again, this is taken straight out of the recommendation report, but Springs, if you want to summarize just in a kind of quick soundbite, would be really focused on personal learning. They're more of a flexible approach to classroom and looping, ability grouping, all of that kind of stuff. The proposed enrollment is shown here. You can see in year one, they start with 150 students, but have really ambitious enrollment targets each and every year, up through a capacity of 800 on year eight. Our review committee, based again entirely on the rubric, recommends the initial denial of the application. We've had conversations with Springs quite a bit, so I think this comes as no surprise that they know what they would probably need to address in an amended application. With the board's blessing, I plan on sharing the recommendation reports with both parties as well, just so they know what was presented. So they partially met the standard on all categories. Remember, there's three levels, so they do not meet, partially meet, or meets or exceeds. So they're kind of in that partial meets for all. I'm gonna focus on the weaknesses, just because that's the nature of the review, but I don't want to like brush over the strengths. So there's a lot of strengths for both these applications, but for the sake of time, I'll focus on the weaknesses, and if you have questions on strengths, if that's okay. So one of the big concerns with Springs is location. That's a concern across the board market. But they mentioned the northwest portion of Rutherford County specifically in their application, then mentioned a Murfreesboro site, and then held a community meeting at a Murfreesboro location, so it caused a lot of confusion. In the capacity interview, we talked about that. They are very willing to locate in Laverne or Smyrna, so we've had positive conversations about that prospect, but there's no location identified yet. One of the reasons that's a big deal is because of community engagement and generating support. So if you don't have the support to meet those enrollment targets, that's gonna be a problem. The other thing, curricular-wise, we just need an updated crosswalk to make sure that the standards are covered appropriately. And again, we're just doing our part to be as rigorous as possible, so that if we do approve one of these, that we know it's a viable option for students and families. So I threw in the survey results here, and I'm also happy to give you the electronic version. It was too much to print out, but if you want to see every single response, I can send that, and you can see all of the responses. So for Springs, we had 179 total responses. The questions, there were just a few questions, so they asked for a name, asked for a role that identified themselves, parent, community stakeholder, et cetera. Asked for whether they support or did not support, and then asked for strengths and weaknesses that they saw in the application. The weird blue bar graph over there on the left, that's just, so the, the application itself was linked to a document that would show how many views it had. So not surprisingly, not everybody read the application that completed the survey. That's understandable, but just so we know how many people were actually viewing the application. It was a small number. In support of Springs specifically, 27% of the respondents supported it, and 73% did not support it.
Can I ask?
Absolutely.
I'm so sorry.
No, please.
Who did you send this?
Okay, so, good question. So the survey was sent out on the evening of April 7 via our website, social media. Mr. Evans, you can probably?
Yeah, so we posted online, and then we pushed that on all of our social media channels as well.
Okay. And we also communicated with the sponsors, so they had a chance to get interest on their own behalf. So that, in hindsight on the, on this process, if you have suggestions for if we go through this again, we're, we're all yours. But, so that's what we did for this year. On the, the respondents that voted in favor of authorizing, I looked at and kind of categorized their comments on what they felt the strengths of the application were. And of those respondents, most of them were parents. Others identified themselves as community stakeholders, and then there were some just random type-ends of who they might be. You can see the first thing there is if they mentioned, they didn't mention anything other than just kind of they were in favor of some sort of choice in and of itself. On the school model, there certainly one of those 48 respondents addressed something specific to Springs curriculum, or the Springs model of instruction, something along those lines, specific to Springs. Another said, just, you know, there were a couple comments about overcrowding in general, and then there were other just random comments about why they might want to look elsewhere. So those were just of those that responded they were in favor of it. Of those not in favor of authorization, I did the same thing with the responses. And you can see one of the big concerns is on funding, and the notion that taxpayer dollars are going to a different type of school outside of our district. Others were just negative towards charters in general. There was a few comments specifics, about 11 that were specific to Springs itself, and negative towards them, then lack of oversight. Some were just in favor of our own schools. SPED concerns is another thing that came up enough that it was worth mentioning. Any questions on the survey? Again, I'm gonna kind of just quickly go over the strengths. But they, they do have a very interesting blended model approach. A lot of flexibility, a lot of communication with parents over individual learning. So they do have a model that's been in use for several years. As far as their operations plan, they have three other states they are looking to operate in. So they're currently operating California in a number of different types of programs in a number of areas. They are currently seeking authorization in Tennessee, Georgia, and Texas. So the, the leadership structure would kind of be focused on multiple new starts, and that's just one of our concerns. Obviously, teacher recruitment is a concern for everyone, and again, that location of a facility. They do not have a transportation plan. It is not required on the rubric, but there are no plans as of now to offer transportation within their application, which is a concern. Financial plan, this was probably one of the biggest original deficits on the application, so there was a lot of, there were some discrepancies between budgeted positions and what they mentioned in the academic plan. There was also some unreliable startup funding around a grant that may or may not be there, and it just, with our finance team as well, it just didn't look like they had financial stability to successfully start the school. We did discuss that at some length in the capacity interview, and they do have other sources of funding that they're happy to give assurances to on an amended application. So the funding is likely there, just didn't show up necessarily in the application in a clear way. So they are happy to address that. Questions on Springs?
I do have some questions.
Yes, sir.
What strengths did you see that, that they offer that we don't offer?
So that's a, and remember, our job is to stick to this rubric. And one of the things that can sometimes be frustrating is that they necessarily have to offer something we don't offer. I will say that this group was very gracious in saying that you are a high-performing district that offers a lot of these things. We are simply offering in it, and they are offering a different curricular model in terms of that it's aligned specifically for a blended grade band group. So they, they loop their students with the same teacher for two to three years. So, and it's very driven, it's instructionally driven via technology. So they have a program that is very blended learning-focused. They use a lot of the same digital programs that we do use. They just use them in slightly different ways, and they're much smaller. So I think that they do a lot of the things we do, they just do it in a different structure in terms of teachers, classrooms, things like that.
What about student-to-teacher ratio, what are they?
That's a good question. So, and that's one of the budget discrepancies, was they, their student-teacher ratio is actually quite high, so they will be adjusting that in an amended application if asked to do so. So they, their student-teacher ratio is upwards to 29 to 30, which is surprising to a lot of people, that both groups, really their class sizes aren't that smaller than ours. But they do also provide, they, they focus a lot on EAs to work with students and pull out in, in small groups.
I also noticed that they look like they're spreading their growth over 10 years to get to 800 students.
Yes.
We do that in one year.
Yes, and I mean, really, that, the enrollment projections look high to me, considering the community support where we are right now. Another thing that is, is not something to judge on the application, but is something for you to consider, is that we potentially have three charter schools opening in the same year. And the, the reason on a rubric that that is concerning is really about that community support. So to make sure that we get a location identified, and that they really focus in on that community, and make sure that parents understand who this may serve better than their zone school, or want to try it. So 800 is quite a lot.
But they're not offering transportation, so to me, that, that's, they're targeting certain economic advantages as far as students go.
Yes, and we discussed transportation. I, I think they're willing to consider it. It's just, obviously, you know as a board that it's expensive, and so that becomes even more of a consideration for you in terms of location. So they're willing to work with us on a location that would serve a need, but it's a matter of having some communication with them in, in terms of really making sure all parents could choose this as an option, and not just a select few that can drive their kids.
Did you get clarification on location within the municipality, like Murfreesboro?
So not clarification that I would feel really confident saying this is the answer we got. I will say that both groups have, both current applications have agreed that the locations they originally sought are no longer viable. So I think both are now seeking locations elsewhere. So yeah, that, I, I do think there was a lack of maybe understanding of the complexity of that. We're still waiting on some legal clarification from the state, though.
Is that to say that they were looking at locations within the city limit?
Yes.
Now they have to look outside?
Yeah.
In the county?
Right.
What would that look like if we went, if they did, and they would have to apply, we think? How do, how do you know where that kid was gonna go? If it would be in a dual zone, it could be a dual zone.
So again, that would be kind of speculation on our part. I mean, I think we've discussed possibilities of would, what would, would they apply to both? Would they apply just K6 for elementary and 712 as a growth model? So again, all those things are, we're seeking clarification. I think some of this is just new territory, because again, charter schools have only been relegated to a certain population as of now.
We have one other question. Test scores, did they have any comparison?
They did. So we have asked for a more detailed listing of results for both of these. So both of these applications came to us as new start applications, which means that they were not required to produce all test score data. We did our due diligence and, and researched that on publicly available sites, so, so the schools that they have that are operating in California, we could, you know, pull those report cards. They have several schools that haven't been open that long, so with COVID, they're not, they don't have results like they typically would. The results for Springs are mixed. I will say they have a admirable percentage of their school is ELL and SPED. So across their different schools, it does not appear from the data that they shy away from those populations. Their academic kind of achievement data, I would say, is on the borderline of high, but not necessarily, so it is comparable with what our schools are doing with that demographic.
You said they didn't shy away, but do they actually go after those students, the ELLs?
So again, since, since we didn't, we don't really have the ability to hone in on some of that on the rubric, because they don't have to fill out that part of the application, since they're considered new. We didn't get into a lot of those details, but just looking, so I don't necessarily know how they recruited the students that are currently at the school, but I know from just looking, when you look kind of across the board, the percentages represented within those schools show that they're used to working with diverse populations.
Do they have a, do they have a record of any failing schools they've started and not materialized?
Not any at the, at the level where it would have been shut down. All of these schools have different, both groups have schools that have been dinged for certain things. So like, for instance, one of the things with one of these schools was attendance. That's kind of a nuanced measure, though, since this school focuses on students that might do some work at home, some work in person, at least in California. That's not what they're, they're doing here. But so that attendance, the way that that is classified, might be a little iffy. But again, we haven't asked, we have not yet seen their full report. That's just all the stuff that we sought out on our own. So no, no major red flags in terms of data. The, it's, it's just hard, because our schools already do such a good, a good job. It's not like, it's not like any charter school is necessarily gonna really raise something from what we're already doing, but remember on that, those six purposes of a charter school, that is one of the purposes, but that's not gonna be one that has to be met for us. And I will say that this group was very, very understanding of the fact that we're a high-performing district, and they would just like to work with us. So it was, it was in no way, we're gonna do this better than you. I will just say anecdotally, that's how it felt in the capacity interview. Not to say that we're not gonna hold them to a high standard on what we see in an application, though. Any other questions on Springs? Okay, so American Classical is the next one. This was the group that reviewed this application. Again, we went through the same process, had the same review timeline, had a capacity interview, that they were also gracious, and we had a good conversation, asked some hard questions, have had follow-ups since. Summary of their application, so their sponsor is American Classical Education, so they refer to themselves as ACE, that is a new sponsor. They also have not proposed a location of the school, and have not even drilled down a, a target community, so it really is wide open. They are founded on the classical mission, in such that they focus on, they have an inclusion of Latin, great texts, art, the like. Big focus on civics and social studies, and principles of moral character. There are, they are sim- There are, they are similar in that they are a new start. But they they do work with a group called BCSI and we will, we will go through that. And they are also closely affiliated with Hillsdale College. So we'll go through how that association is oriented, because it can get pretty confusing pretty quickly. The summary of their application, so they are looking at at capacity, having just under seven hundred students. They will start K five if authorized and add a grade each year until that last twenty thirty-three where they will add high school, the rest of high school. Okay, this this is the story of Hillsdale has been told to me by their representatives. So one of the questions is the affiliation of the proposed school, American Classical Academy, Rutherford, with these other organizations. And I will commend the group on their application. They were very forthcoming in their affiliations and their representation. So this is all the information that I have received from them in terms of how this is organized. So we've gotten several questions as I in in the survey, there were several comments, so I thought it was good just to to lay this out here and see what we see what sense it makes. So Hillsdale College is a small, private, Christian college in Michigan. They don't take any federal money and they pride themselves on that, so they therefore they they don't report on a lot of things, so they're just, they exist as a singular body. They have a group of donors or supporters that they refer to as Friends of Hillsdale. So that is where people make donations and then they use those funds however they see fit in in different charitable endeavors. They have about, I think it's twenty years ago, they started a school and a classical academy on their campus that was a private school. And it was started by a generous donation by the Barney family. So then it became Barney Charter School Initiative that's been going on for just over ten years, I believe. And they have member schools and curricular schools. So the Barney Charter School Initiative currently is not funded by Hillsdale, it is funded by Friends of Hillsdale and other donations. Member schools do not do not pay to be a member, they simply apply to be a member. So they do not pay Barney Charter, they just apply and then those services, if authorized, are given to that school. The curriculum is used in all of those schools and it is produced by Hillsdale and Hillsdale faculty, along with the other K twelve programs that they operate. There's evidently a continual drafting of the curriculum as it is used in schools and it is kind of a living document. That includes the seventeen seventy-six curriculum and literacy essentials and some other programs that they use within that program guide. So that is produced and kind of under the big umbrella of Hillsdale. You'll find that on their Hillsdale main page. Barney Charter School Initiative has a Hillsdale web address, so that's all part of the same group. American Classical is a new sponsor that was born this year to present these three charter applications in Tennessee. So they now have their own executive director and they have plans of authorizing or supporting schools across the country under this American Classical umbrella. So they have a governing board of nine men that are all closely affiliated with Hillsdale, either directly employed, former faculty, graduates. So that is the governing board of American Classical. And then, like I said, there will be some local board members that will report to the governing board for decisions to be made. There are three applications currently underway, there's one in Jackson Madison, one in Clarksville, Montgomery, and ours. The green arrows are money, the black arrows are support and services. We asked in the capacity interview if money ever flowed backwards. So would money from BEP funds, let's say, that went into a charter school then end up at Hillsdale College? And we were told no. Ms. Ridley was sat in on that capacity interview with us and so their lawyer was there as well and said that the way the organizations are structured, that the money does not flow like that back to the top. So this is just the information as I know it that has been given to us. We are seeking some additional clarification on some things related to the structure, but this is, this is how all of that fits together. Any questions on that?
A ton of questions. But I I'll keep it simple.
Okay.
Just to be clear, American Classical is new.
It is new.
And it doesn't have any relationship per to the Barney Charter.
Correct.
Completely different.
They a- as structures, they are completely different. However, they will receive support from structures already in place with Barney. So professional development, and that's all considered Hillsdale K twelve, but professional development, instructional support, principal pipeline, all of those things that it currently offers to the BCSI, that would is also being offered to ACE. So they are very similar but different.
Okay.
Are the Barney Charter Schools, are those private charters?
They have private and charters that are considered Barney schools. And they have some schools that are just using curriculum and then they have their official members.
Does American Classical have any private charters?
No, they have no charters yet, period. They only have applications.
Are they only here?
They are right now. They they do, in the capacity interview when we were talking, though, they do have plans to that ACE, which I didn't pick this up in the application, but that ACE will will ultimately be responsible for many schools across the country with only under the direction of that governing board. As opposed to lots of different organizations with lots of boards. So at some point, it becomes a scalability issue, that's not necessarily our question at this point, but it will be somebody's question.
So the curriculum that shows comes through Hillsdale, correct?
It does, it does.
So in a sense, that is money returning to Hillsdale.
Well, they 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 don't charge for it.
This is the group that our governor really pushed hard for, is trying to get started into Tennessee. I think he asked for a hundred.
Fifty.
Well, he's only getting fifty, but I think he initially asked.
Oh, he did. And there's nobody locally here on their board or?
No, no, and in their application, they talk about a local governing body. So the governing board that are the nine members that are part of their board structure will have communication with a local group.
They don't have that group yet.
Oh, they don't have that group yet. It'll be a local committee that will let them know of issues. And that is, again, one of the things that is in are things we'd like to see addressed, depending on how the vote goes. It's just that we would like to see that clarified in terms of how are they involved in decision making? Or is it just one of those where they just report up and hope a decision comes? So that that is one of the things we're seeking some clarification on if if they submit an amended application.
Now, they will provide transportation.
They will not.
They will not.
Or at least that's not in their application. I I I think I think both groups would be willing to discuss what they can offer and it also depends on what that, it's in their best interest to hit those enrollment targets. So if that is a need, I think they would.
If they're not located next to a larger municipality, they're gonna have difficulty.
And where are they located in relation to the others?
Right.
When we have those three, like it's it is tricky. And and that's, again, they have been very communicative. It's been a little bit different in terms of Springs is definitely willing to go to Laverne, Smyrna area, is excited about it, went and toured it as soon as they left the capacity interview. This group is a little bit on on drilling down a location. They have changed their strategy on facilities because I think they realize it's a little trickier working with kind of a national firm. So they've they've brought on somebody more local so that they can get more of a sense for things quickly. So they're still looking. I think they're in good faith, I think they're looking and I think they'll let us know when they get something. And the timeline is weird because it's like you have to be authorized before you can really have a location, but you have to show that there's interest before you can be authorized. So we're keeping all of that in mind, but we just need a little bit more guidance on what they're thinking in terms of location.
So I I had an opportunity to meet with a gentleman and I'll be honest, I don't really remember or understand, now that I've looked at this, where he falls into all of it.
Okay.
But I it was Hillsdale and it was following our joint meeting with City Schools. I just had tons of questions and I, so he stated to me, this gentleman, that there is no relationship between Hillsdale College and American Classical, and this says something different.
And I don't know what context he was saying that there were, and he may have meant financial. So it is tricky and I and I certainly hope I'm not, well, yeah, I'm not misrepresenting what was told to me. But so I don't wanna say that's wrong, because I don't know the context. But there's certainly an affiliation and relationship. And I will say that that is, again, kind of a commendable thing about the application, it was there from start to finish. So it's not something they're shying away from, but there's definitely a relationship there, yeah.
And so my thing is, and I don't know if this has been covered, but obviously being a religious institution,
Right.
which I don't have a problem with as a Christian myself, however, separation of church and state. And so where does that or is that covered at all in this process?
It is. So one thing to keep in mind is there are several existing charter schools under that Barney Charter School Initiative that are operating in public states. So public schools in states. So they are, they are going through that same process. They did assure us in the capacity interview and Ms. Ridley even asked a question about about the religious connections in particular and what do we do when we get a complaint? And how does that, how does that work? And the lawyer assured us that the the institutions are separate. So they have made adjustments to the curriculum that may show up in a private school under their name versus what would show up in a public school. It in the recommendation report, you'll see where there they provide some loose characterization of the curriculum. And there was an issue with the link that was provided initially, but they have re-submitted that link and we have access now to the full program guide. And they didn't have to do that, but they did. So we are now in the process of kind of looking through that, just again, kind of looking at Tennessee and grade level expectations. If this is what they have in their vertical alignment that's covered in fourth grade. We know testing isn't a super high priority in terms of their curricular structure, but we just, if we're, if you're gonna authorize, you wanna know that they're hitting those marks for those test scores that kids are gonna be held accountable and that you would be held accountable for. So that's kind of what we're going through and and when we were talking during the capacity interview, she goes, you know, this is still a draft, we're still working on the Tennessee alignment. So I think that is not gonna be a surprise that we're asking for that, some more details if if we need an amended application.
The two individuals, two gentlemen that spoke before the commission, they spoke separately over a month, I think. Can you recall the other ones, what's his?
Shellhammer?
Shellhammer, is he, he's with Hillsdale, right?
He is the the now appointed executive director of American Classical. He is a Hillsdale graduate and now is with American Classical. Mike Horner is on the governing board and is currently the number two at Hillsdale. So he is currently employed at Hillsdale.
He did, they did, he spoke at
Yes.
a commission meeting and he did state, you know, that it would, there not would not be a religious affiliation, although they're, you know.
Yeah, there's state laws against that, so.
There was a comparison they used there that I actually wrote it down because I was really surprised by it. He said his comment was to overcome corruption and corrosion versus joy and happiness. He's basically saying that our school district is corrosive. You know, we need to look at these groups and see how political power packs is behind these groups. I know I've heard he spent over eight million dollars in five years just lobbying our legislators up there trying to get this stuff passed through. Obviously, they've got Lee on board. He's even went out and committed, established his own committee to approve these charter schools, so. We really need to do our homework here and make sure that we're not getting into something that we'll definitely regret later on.
I have a question.
Okay.
I also met with a gentleman and my, one of my strongest concerns was about our special education.
Yes.
And I was assured that is, and I and I believe he was being straight with me, that it's first come, first served. If you get your application in, if you are a special education student. And I told him, I said, no matter what level of special education? And he said, no, your special education, we can take you. What assurances did they give you that they would have the staffing, that it would be?
Great question, this is a good segue. So I'm gonna skip this really quickly, but so our, again, recommendation is to deny the initial application with seeking those additional details on some of those things that were brought up that apply to the rubric. And I I don't wanna misidentify this group, I do think that they're doing their best to follow the law.
I was impressed, I was very impressed.
So they they have been willing to answer any of the questions that we've thrown at them, so I will say that that's been a positive. They are also, they met or exceeded the standard on financial capacity, so that is not a concern. So they're just looking at partially meets on two of them. And one of the, on the academic plan, I would say the biggest, one of the biggest things is the special ed considerations. So the lack of alignment to Tennessee standards, it is a lack of alignment that we have seen in the application. It could be that everything, we just need that clarified. And they do have some really great stuff in that curriculum, obviously, and they've been successful. The gaps with the special education plan specifically was also something that our review committee brought up. We had extensive conversations, capacity interview, and at the capacity interview, they brought their prospective principal, so the man that would be the principal of this school if authorized. He was very good, he's a seasoned public school principal, he's worked in several districts, he's worked under the Barney Charter School Initiative for several years as a principal in Ohio. And so the information he gave us on special education was helpful in painting the picture, like what you're saying in terms of, yes, we we do. And he he mentioned several anecdotal examples of special education services that they provide in his current school. The problem with that is that we just need to see some of that really clarified in the application. It seemed very much of a, we take it as it comes and we support what we can. I will say that their funding, and they assured us this in the capacity interview and are willing to put it in an amended application, is that their funding is such that they have the flexibility to staff whatever positions they need. So if the proportion isn't what they had anticipated, they were just using our district averages, so if it's not nine percent and it's fifteen percent, they, he said that they could make that work. There were concerns just in some of the language in terms of IEPs and what is deemed important or helpful and what isn't. So there's just some concerns in terms of, are we, are we pushing students to a level that is beneficial to them in the long run in terms of, yes, we're gonna make you really work at this until you get it and you keep reading and you keep reading? But are we providing the support to make sure that they're ultimately successful? And so anecdotally, they provided stories that made you feel better about the process. We just, there are no written procedures for how that would be handled. It's very much just we'll follow the law, move on to the next section, we're gonna follow the law, move on to the next section. So we're just looking for some clarification on that.
I think one of the biggest things that came out of the the talk that he had with the commission, he wasn't aware, I think he's more of a CFO type guy. He wasn't aware that they would get local money and federal money, which by itself will show you that it's it's not connected directly to Hillsdale. Because you you mentioned they don't take you.
Right, they, yeah, they don't.
But these, they will, this charter will take.
Right.
Because they'll be working with those.
Right, yeah, so they will take our, the BEP and federal funds. And he apologized for miss speaking on the waiver situation and and that.
So I have a question about special education.
Okay.
I think you just touched on it, but I just need a little clarification. So when I met with the gentleman privately, he said that their goal was to ta- take students from a young age and build, which is what that that scale is a reflection of for their populating their school. What is, do they have specifics in identifying the students who may need additional services? So we also went to the community meeting and they kind of approached it and never covered it, so.
It is vague and it's vague in the application, which is why it's listed as a concern. And that was a specific question in the capacity interview was, we understand that ultimately you wanna be able to start in kindergarten and give them the skills to be successful as they move through. But you've got five years of taking kids as they move in. And then eventually, you're gonna still have kids moving in that may just really want a classical education that are in a different school. So there were, there were not, again, there were not specifics. It was very vague, it was very, we'll take. It was very vague. It was very, we'll take every student as it comes and we'll see what they need. They do have to follow the law. I mean, so there is, you know, they follow child find and all those other services as required. It, it's just a matter of, I, I think, if I'm trying to drill down, the, the main concern is we don't necessarily see in their data the same thing that you saw with Springs where there were a high percentage of special ed students beyond what we typically have here, higher than that in ELL students. It's not necessarily the same proportions with current Barney Charter Schools as they exist right now. And so, the concern for the committee is that, I have no doubt that they're following the law. I, I am not, um, so it's more of, are we giving, is there something in the curricular model that's making people feel like they can't be successful? Or is there something that if I'm, if I am dyslexic, what supports are in place to make sure? Because there's a lot of reading and, again, the principal assured us, like, we would do what we had to do to make sure they were successful. So, it, it's just a matter of how, how can we put that in something that we can feel good about promoting to all of our parents?
Or, or even just understand.
Or just understand.
How we're going to identify our students if, particularly with the reading and you hit on the dyslexia. But how do we identify, what is their model to identify those students as they're in their system? Again, we just never, so I wasn't sure.
And they mentioned some formative assessments and they mentioned some programs that they use. But there is not a strict, here's our procedure, here's how often we do it, here's the mark we're looking for. This is when we know they need additional services. It's very much a focus on the ability of that teacher, uh, which I understand completely that that teacher is going to be your, your main touch point. But then, and also with parents, like, they're depending on parents to say there's something wrong. And so, we just need to kind of fill in those gaps on, if there's a kid that doesn't have that advocate, but they really want to be, you know. So, those are questions that we're looking for answers on to.
When you look at the capacity, though, that, they will have a, a greater opportunity due to the fact, you're talking about six hundred kids.
Right.
So, it's a lot, you know, it's, the capacity there to actually have that dialogue is going to be a lot, you know, greater.
And they, they do a lot of K-12, so you have a lot of the, eventually, you'll have older students working with younger students and.
Would they be utilizing EAs? I, I know you specifically said in Springs, would, would.
They, they do have that in the budget to some level. I, I don't remember. It's, it's not a specific highlight of their application. It's, it's, but they do have those available if students need one-on-one.
Application process, how's that work? I mean, I mean, they have like a, uh?
It's a lottery.
Lottery?
And it's first, if, if you are under that enrollment cap, they take them all. And then, beyond that, it's a lottery. And if, if, depending on who the authorizer is, you would have some kind of communication and oversight of, of that process in terms of, here's our enrollment target, here's what we're shooting for, here's where we are in the application, here's how many we have applied.
There's no testing?
No, it is not merit-based, right.
It's not like Central Magnet?
Exactly.
Have to have a certain?
Correct. Yes, yes. And they are not, they, they can't do that. Like, that is against what Tennessee has set forth as a possibility. All right. So, the survey results for Classical. Community support is still just one of our kind of questions. A hundred and sixty-three responses for this one. Nineteen percent in support and eighty-one percent against. Same kind of thing with the application views. In terms of the, those in favor of authorization, one important thing that popped out as a little bit of a difference was that there were a group of respondents, although this is a small group, but that wrote in that they were a parent of a non-RCS student and either it's homeschool, private school, um, Murfreesboro City. So, they, they were a non-RCS parent that was in support of this. The strengths, again, you see choice just in general popping up a lot, just as we want a choice. Then you have about seventeen, eighteen responses that included some sort of favor with the curriculum and the classical model. And then you had some responses that were like, I support this because I'm against blah, 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 blah. So, there was, I just kind of qualified that as a grievance. So, if they didn't like, the cell phone policy got brought up and a couple of other things that they, they were in support of this because they felt they might do these things better. And then, there's some other things. Of those not in favor, a hundred and thirty-two responses. Again, same thing on the other. You have the biggest concern is the diversion of funds. Then you have some negative towards charters in general. This one had more specific, uh, negative comments towards either ACAR or were concerned about a Hillsdale political slash religious affiliation. Any questions on that? We've kind of covered quite a bit of this. Again, lack of diversity on the board and that, I'm really meaning of, uh, experience and geographic location. They're all very affiliated with Hillsdale, which I understand if that's the model that you are proposing. So, I, some of that is understandable. I think it's just a matter of how, how do we make sure that our local, the local community is heard by that board? Again, lack of identified location, which I know they're working on. And then, the same thing with the transportation plan. Again, that is not required by the rubric. But it's just something that we would like a conversation about. They did have an extremely impressive opening checklist and plan in the application, so that is worth noting.
Do either of these schools, or did you touch on it at all? Do either of these entities plan on expanding to additional facilities within our system, within our county?
They did not express that. My thought is that that would be pushing it in terms of their capacity and, and you certainly wouldn't want to hurt enrollment at one in favor of another. The only opportunity there would be if, if we are the LEA of one and let's say that Springs wanted to also offer high school. So, several years down the road, they would come back with, we want to expand, we want to offer these additional grades. Or if, if another group wanted, their enrollment was at, instead of six ninety, they had two hundred on a waiting list and they wanted to expand the enrollment, they would come back through the authorization process to seek an expansion.
And, uh, is there anything in state law that would prohibit them to duplicate that school if they wanted to in the future?
Within our district or elsewhere?
Within our district. Like, you know, take the same, uh, Hillsdale would, would partner with someone besides American Classical, in other words. Could they have multiple?
Under ACE or under some, under like Barney?
Not, not under ACE, Hillsdale partnering with their curriculum with another.
They certainly could. I mean, so, and that, that could, they can use, people can use that curriculum outside of ACE or Barney. So, there's nothing that precludes somebody from doing that. It is, it is worth noting that it's not on our state curriculum or instructional materials list. So, that's something that they have submitted a waiver for. So, even if, if that worked really well for social studies, it wouldn't be able to be replicated in a, in a middle school here, let's say, but.
I believe we have a private school. I believe we have a private school that has the classical.
Right.
Redeemer.
Oh, yeah, redeemer.
That's what I thought. I thought, I thought we had a private school.
In your opinion, and it would just be opinion, maybe you know this. Why did they choose Rutherford County, Clarkville, Montgomery and Jackson Madison?
I, I do not know why they chose those three. I did ask both groups why they chose us, just out of curiosity. And they both told us that the state had directed them towards us as a viable location. In, in the future, um, as we move, we are able to post a, a statement of need on things we actually need and think we need to help our district. So, in the future, we'll have that posted so that the state hopefully will kind of follow what we think is a documented need in area, in services, et cetera, but.
I can see two things. Ja- uh, us and Clarkville, Montgomery are two fast-growing. What about Jackson Madison? I don't know.
That blue oval's coming. Blue ovals, blue oval.
And it does make sense. I mean, when you're growing that, that quickly, which is also why financially, we have a hard sell in terms of why that would hurt us. Just because this is, I, I think if all three were authorized by one entity or another and all opened in twenty-three, twenty-four, we're looking at that first year, I think, around nine hundred fifty, nine hundred and sixty kids in year one. Obviously, that grows beyond that, but.
The reason, the question about additional, and I asked them as well, is because if it's a, if it's a model and we go through this process and it looks like a good model and it's something that our community has accepted and adopted. It would almo- it almost appears, and I don't know, but it, it almost appears as though it might be easier to expand an existing model that's proven in our community than to continue to usher in new charter schools.
Oh, gotcha.
As to build that relationship is, is part of why I'm asking.
I, I think that's def- so, that would, we as an LEA have that right to say, if there's something you like and you wanted to replicate it, they would be more than happy to do that. If, if they and their governing body also look and say, you know what, I think we do have room to grow here. I think if we had one on this side of the county and then we have another one on that side of the county, I think they certainly would be willing to do that.
I'm not encouraging or discouraging, just saying this could be easier if we
Sure.
found a model that worked.
And there is no, just keep in mind too, that there is no current law that limits the number of charter schools. So, um, it, it's hard to really know what, when your need is met. It, it's hard to define a need and then when is it met? And so, that, that is a difficult thing to ponder as well.
And with growth, I can see where, as we battle with these building plans and these overcrowdings, I, I can see, and, and so that's what has changed my position on charter schools in some ways. But it's all very, I, I still remain concerned about the curriculum.
I will say, um, at varying levels, but, and in different ways, but both of these groups have been responsive and worked, have worked with us. I, I don't think they would shy away from any of these asks. I think they're, they want to work with us. So, it is a, it's, it has been a positive experience thus far. But again, that doesn't go, our review was strictly based on that criteria set out in that rubric, which is from the quality authorizing standards that say, if you have questions about these things, it's best to get those addressed upfront so that in your agreement, you know exactly what it is that you're looking for.
If we, if we do an agreement with these schools and for some instance, they're not following that agreement, is there ways to address that or?
If we act as the authorizer, then every, I think it's five years, uh, maybe ten now that I'm thinking about it. We would have a review process where we as an authorizer would be reviewed and then they also would be reviewed on their agreement before you revoked that charter or extended that charter. So, there would be oversight in terms of openings and closings of that school.
But if we're not the authorizer, that would be a secret.
If we are not the authorizer, that is left completely up to the commission.
Good. Do we have any obligation to allow them to use any of our facilities such as gymnasiums or practice fields or?
You would not.
Soccer team or something? How does all that kind of work?
If they were authorized by, any of that would be worked out through agreements. So, if, if they wanted to use it, there would be an agreement, we could, and we would charge or whatever that might be. So, again, just where we are on this timeline, uh, on Thursday, you have your initial vote. And then, our options, if, if one or both are denied on the initial read, we have ten days to report, which we would do that sooner, obviously, but report to that organization or the sponsor with detailed list of things, which is partly why we wrote the recommendation report, so they would have something to go by. And then, a submitted amended application would come to us. We would have sixty days upon receipt to review that and then you would vote again. If approv- if approved, we would start the agreement process and the contract. And then, if, on the amended application, if approved, we would start an agreement. If not, that's when it goes to the charter commission and they consider it. If it goes to the charter commission and they approve it, then we still have a period where we could come back and agree to work together. Or that would have to be, both parties would have to agree to that, or they would just be authorized by the charter commission as the LEA. Any other questions?
The charter commission, how many people are on that commission?
There's nine.
There's nine people going to oversee fifty schools?
Well, they have staff. They have a small staff now and it's, and it's growing. Yes, but it is.
Based on some of the failure rates in the state now, it's the same charter school commission overseeing that now?
There was a switch, but yes, so it's, it's moved hands a few times. But now that the charter commission has been approved, they are now the oversight body for those schools approved or adopted into the charter commission as the LEA.
I guess what I struggle with mostly is if this curriculum and this structure is so much better than what we're doing, why is our state not adopting that and making that, uh, the standard for the whole state? And we're training all of our teachers to teach this curriculum?
I think ultimately, that was the idea of charter schools, that they were kind of think tanks for new ideas. And if, if we as a district saw something like that, I think that was, that'd be when we'd get on legislators and ask for the same accommodations to request waivers as charter schools are given. Because we, right now, cannot request the same waivers that charter schools do. So, um, the American Classical has three pages of waivers. The Springs does not, but there's some things that should be included in waivers that they're addressing now that they'll include on this, the amended application. And so, it's frustrating.
How closely connected is SCORE to them?
I don't know. I, I think SCORE supports the model, but I don't know of any connection.
But they have, um, they have spoken up about that model.
For the classical?
They've made that pretty clear.
Yes.
So, state sponsors or what is the word we use, not sponsors?
Authorizers?
Authorizes the school. We get, start getting complaints from people about that school. Do we have an opportunity to go to the state and say, hey, look guys, this is what we're hearing because we have no authority?
Sure. If, if the, if a school authorized by the commission, if there are grievances that come to you, first they would go to their governing boards, because remember, each of these sponsors has a different governing board outside the commission. So, the governing board would be the one that should address it. And if not, it would be the charter commission's responsibility to ensure that that was taken care of, especially as it comes to things that are required by law.
I'm not sure taxpayers will understand that process real well.
It's, it's a confusing process.
I mean, I don't think they're going to understand our answers for that.
The other thing that changes on all the funding is with TISA. So, I mean, with a new funding model, a lot of this is kind of up in the air. So, both of the, both of these sponsors discussed that in the capacity interview. Like, we budgeted the best we can right now. This could change.
There will be reconciliations as people leave us and go to them and, and leave them and come to us too.
Yes.
Can you go back to the waivers that they are eligible for, but we aren't? Can you be a little bit more specific on maybe just categories? What, what?
All. So, they can waive, uh, curriculum, instructional materials, schedules, uh, salary schedules. Facilities, uh, transport, well, transportation is not required anyway. But, um, there's, up until recently, the teacher licensures, uh, they can still, they have different hiring processes. Yeah, really, the, runs the gamut.
About testing and stuff like that?
They have to test. So, under state law, they do, they have to take all the same state assessments. So that, and that is a distinction. If we authorize as an LEA, then those test scores are our test scores. If the commission authorizes, those test scores are not our, that counts under the commission and those students and scores would, or not be part of Rutherford County. So, to that, in that point, it is very similar, like a Murfreesboro City.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much, Dr. Chastain.
Appreciate you. Okay, that was a lot. Next item.
Number ten, approval of innovative high school grant revision. Currently, we have these career coach, I think this is what this is, coach facilitator and career coach at Riverdale and Laverne. So, this innovative- So this innovative high school grant presented an approval on June, uh, June the 10th of 2021 as a Tennessee Department of Education competitive grant for the funding of May the 21st, 2021 through September 30th of 2023. This grant was in a total of $1,44,125.37. Innovative high school grant provides funding to allow Rutherford County schools to reimagine the use of time, space, partnership and models of learning for student success. This revision here would include adding two career of facility positions, a career coach, if you will, to be housed at Smyrna High School and a career coach facilitator to be housed at Oakland High School.
How did we determine the high schools they were getting to be placed at?
Uh, I would, I'm gonna take a guess here, but the volume of CTE, uh,
Okay.
kids in CTE. Now, I will say this, this would be a great opportunity, uh, to these next couple of years to look, revisit that graduation, um, graduation coach. It'd be a great opportunity to vision, uh, to revisit that because you can repurpose that and plug it back into those schools. I guess it would be Siegel, Rockville, who, who else am I missing here? Ever, those would be the next two? Stewart's Creek and Blackman, yeah.
We did for these, we also looked over the last two years, and adding them last year, we went by our free reduced percentage. And so free reduced lunch percentage, this is, these are our top four high schools with Smyrna, Laverne, Oakland, Riverdale.
Mr. Spurlock, to the point you just made,
Mm-hmm.
are you speaking to extend the career coach and remove or, or?
Yes, I would, I would, uh, I would make a suggestion to the board to take a look at using, repurposing those positions to a career coach and place those in those schools that we currently do not have. Now, uh, you know, Dr. Sullivan talked about, you know, the pre-reduced lunch and stuff like that. Look, all of our students are needing advice and help as far as a career is concerned. You know, we've talked about this many times, we look at our graduation rate in terms of high school and we compare that to the number of students going to college and the number of students who are actually graduating, there is a gap, a significant gap there. So we need to, you know, perhaps invest in giving information as far as a career is concerned. And that may be include, that, that doesn't eliminate college, but it may eliminate for some. Uh, I think if we could do that, we may solve some of our federal government problems with, with deficits and the number of people who are wanting their student loans forgiven. So perhaps maybe this is a way of really reimagining the United States, at least as far as the government is concerned.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, next item.
Eagleville High School, uh, extension of the National Federation of High School School Broadcast Program Contract found on tab three. In 2019, Eagleville High School entered into agreement with 2080 Media Inc., play on sports for two pixelated automated production systems to allow football and basketball uh, games to be viewed online. The school now desires to add these systems for baseball and softball. The contract will be extended over four years and the two additional systems would be added at one-time cost of $3,500 for two additional systems. A parent has agreed to contribute this $3,500 for the cost of the two additional systems. Board attorney, Mr. Jeff Reed, has reviewed and proposed the contract and found it to be in order. Mr. Pettigo, could you step up here and take some questions? You're able to determine viewership when, when you're broadcasting those?
Yes, sir.
What have you seen as far as trends are concerned?
Especially with COVID and having limited capacity, that really bumped our numbers up, but what we see from extended family that are out and about around the country that, and that's in this particular case, this parents got a lot of extended family member in Texas that would like to be able to view those and they're on the softball and the baseball team. So we do pretty well with it, not huge numbers, but it's pretty good.
It's nice, nice opportunity for students in our family.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, this is a subscription service, I'm very incorrect.
Yes, sir. It is by, by any parent or whoever wants to do it, yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Pettigo or on this item? Thank you, appreciate you being here.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Pettigo.
Next item.
All right, number 12 is the 2021, 2022 tenure recommendation. The following teachers meet the criteria for tenure in accordance with the new tenure law. These are the bulleted points in which they must meet. Hold a valid Tennessee teaching license, have served Rutherford County schools for five years or 45 month minimum within a seven-year period, and the last two in a regular, not interim position. Uh, has deter, excuse me, um, has demonstrated an overall performance of above expectations or significantly above expectations on the team evaluation during the last two consecutive years or five-year period, that would be either a four or a five. Or if held tenure under previous guidelines and return to Rutherford County schools and meets the two-year probationary period, the tenure will be reactivated. And the, uh, the tenure of those teachers and administrators are on the next two pages. Just a reminder, I know it says administrator, but administrators are not tenured, but those individuals would be tenured in their teaching position.
Okay, any questions? All right, next item.
All right, number 13, course offer, uh, courses offered for credit in grades nine through 12 for the 2022, uh, 23 school year, found on tab four. The instructional department is requesting permission to offer these courses listed in the attachment for the 2022, 2023 year under the following guidelines. Board of Education Policy 4.201 states in part, "A listing of courses offered for credit in grades nine to 12 will be approved annually by the board."
Thank you. Any questions, members of the board? Okay.
All right, item 14 is ESL contract with EL, EL elevation. ESL department needs comprehensive student information system that can store ESL student data and compliance reports. EL elevation provides a platform to easily track students' language proficiency reports, store state reports for compliance, analyze their growth, share student assessments and progress with teachers and admin, and help make informed decisions about the programming. This platform is being used currently by 42 districts within the state of Tennessee. Uh, this total of this cost is how much, Dr. Sullivan?
Seventy-seven thousand.
This is within our, our budget in a line item. What is it, for contracted services?
That's with software.
Software. And how many do we add this year?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred.
EL, EL, okay, thank you.
It is, yes, this is to track our English language students who take the WEATA access assessment. Right now, we get the scores back and we run everything off of Excel spreadsheets. And so if you have one error in a formula, then you could have a student who is in an EL class who has technically tested out and so definitely important.
Thank you. Is this a one-time cost or an annual recurring cost?
It's an annual, but we will make sure that we have the, the benefit and it's used at the level it needs to before, or we would go back to using Excel spreadsheets again.
Uh, it says cost of the program can be split.
It is, that was if we needed to split it over multiple years, we don't because we already have this item.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item? Okay, next item, Mr. Spurlock.
All right, number 15, uh, one is the centralized cafeteria fund, 143 in the 2022, 23 budget. Centralized cafeteria fund, uh, 143 of the 2022, 23 budget has $24,710,000 in revenues and $27,259,983 in expenditures and uses a 10, uh, 2,549,903, uh, fund balance to fund the cafeterias.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Bowdery, you may want to mention to, I think Mr. uh, Mr. Tim here, he wasn't on the board, so he needs to understand what is the, what do we have to maintain in, in fund balance?
On the, we're looking at the
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria fund, we cannot, we cannot have over 10% of the, of the expenditures in that fund balance remaining for, for federal law. So the excess, we have to have a, we have to have a, a plan to spend down the excess, which we do. It's, it's, uh, typically that, that, that fund is pretty low, but, um, due to the USDA seamless summer and the emergency feeding, you know, there, everyone's, you know, the chip, the children are all able to, to eat, you know, at no cost, you know, since the USDA sends funds down for meals served, um, that's greatly increased. The meal participation thus, you know, this discussion with the board, um, since that, that started was, you know, with the additional meals being served, we needed more cafeteria employees, we were struggling there for a while, um, just like everybody in food service to have adequate staffing for the cafeterias. Board, of course, approved a step increase for the food service employees to get close to market in there. It's still under market, but that's another discussion. But, um, we've been able to increase some staffing and stay with the meal, uh, the, the production demands based on guidance that we've got from USDA so far this year. It's just the USDA's intent to sunset that seamless summer program at the beginning of next school year, so we'll go back to the traditional, you know, if you're free reduced, you know, if you qualify for that, you fill out the paperwork, you, you get that, if not, you, you pay and for the meal like traditionally has been done. And as we discussed in the work session, I'll, I'll be in the budget workshop, we'll be, soon be bringing the board, um, updated meal prices reflecting the inflation costs that we discussed during that work session on the cafeteria fund. We're seeing some pretty good increases in food prep supplies, raw food, and of course the labor costs going up, but that, in that nutshell is what that fund is required to have.
Thank you. Any other questions? On this one, okay, next item.
All right, is our, uh, number two is the Capital Projects Fund, 177 for the 2022, 23 fiscal year. Educational Capital Projects Fund, 177 fiscal year 2022, 2023. Budget has $8,228,247 in estimated revenues and $8,228,247 in estimated expenditures. The current, um, current property tax levy of five and a half cents and the 2.4 million in, that's in the development tax, right? Is that right, Mr. Lee? Development tax, 2.4 million? Is that correct? All right, uh, what is a penny getting right now, Doug? Are you just making it a million or what are you thinking it is?
The original estimate on a penny this year unshared was right at a million and of course, we're seeing some growth starting now, it's, it's starting to go over the 100% collection, um, for the actual over the budget for, uh, current property tax. We're still waiting on the state, I just got notification that, um, hopefully the state will sign off on the new, uh, the, the reappraisal
Mm-hmm.
rate and, or I'm sorry, the assessments and at that point, they can work, the county can start working on the, uh, new rate.
Mr. Bowdery, it used to be, last year was seven and a half cents, they swapped the two cents on the levy for the development tax and I think it came in probably a little bit higher than you anticipated, or actually
It's 400,000.
It's a little bit higher than probably what we would have received as far as the
That's correct. It's, yeah, it's budget, it's, we're estimating about 400,000 more to the better than if we had stayed with the two cents on the property tax.
That was good.
Okay, any other questions on this item? Okay.
All right, number three is the General Purpose School Fund, 141 for the 2022, 23, 23 budget. The General Purpose School Fund of, of this next fiscal year has an estimated dollars waiting for the state April BEP estimate and I will say, I, I did hear the other day that it may be at the end of this month or early May. So we're waiting on that, the copy, uh, the, the county property tax revenue estimate that Mr. Bowdery talked about and other areas of revenues and expenditures. Uh, April BEP estimate, uh, updated by the county property tax revenue estimate and this fund balance, uh, was all used to determine the budget, uh, the proposed expenditure budget for funding for 4% pay increase for all Rutherford County certified and classified employees and along with this 3% increase for RCS bus contractors that is, is within the contract. Mr. Bro, uh, Mr. Bowdery, you anticipate, uh, the sales tax to be a little bit higher, right? And, go ahead.
I have, uh, are you talking about this fiscal year or the next?
Next, or this fiscal year, I'm sorry.
This fiscal year, yes, we're projecting to have surplus, of course, we were conservative when we, we were still in the middle of, well, we were just coming out of one, of one variant and it was already on the horizon for the next one, so, you know, we worked with the county commission, they said, please be conservative with the sales tax revenue estimates. By state statute, the county commission has the final say on what local revenue estimates are going to be for a school board, you know, for, you know, for the school system, they by law have that, you know, so they, if, if I adjusted high, they could say, hey, no, you know, they would have the state law to back them on that. So we were conservative in state in the sales tax for the local option, uh, sales tax and, uh, we of course have gone over that, you know, the economy's continued to move and, um, the, uh, so we will be over this year and next year with, um, the preliminary estimate, we're about $15 million more, um, for sales tax over this current amended sales tax revenue line item that we have now. That's reflected in the budget that we worked through at the work session last, or this last week. Once again, the property tax and the BEP, as we discussed, we still don't have a firm number in and that, that will be hopefully coming within the next couple of weeks, next week hopefully, property tax, then, you know, like our, we've discussed, um, end of April, beginning of May, before we see the April estimate for the BEP from the state.
And, and we're talking about, about 53% of funding, 141 comes from the state.
From the BEP and then when you factor this property tax in, we're, we're literally waiting on 75% of our revenue. I've got an estimate, but.
And on that is, is the ADM, so that's another thing that a lot of times people get confused with, our enrollment and our ADM. Our, our ADM is average daily membership over a 20-day period and it, those go in cycles there. So you can take, you know, kids are coming, when you get as large as we are, you got kids coming in, kids coming out, and if they fall in between that lack of 20 days, they don't count within the ADM. Also, your special ed, making sure that your options are identified and I think we did a great job. Whoever did that when they came in here is, is our new financial guy, I don't know who that guy is.
Got well, got well familiar with the attendance department.
But he made sure that, uh, our students were being identified correctly so that the funding would follow them and our career and technical education improved. So there was a lot of money that we were losing and thanks to the, uh, finance department, we actually recouped that back and with help of instruction and special ed and attendance.
Yes, that was, that was a big
You owe me some money after this is over.
Thank you, thank you. Agree, on our agreed upon price, yeah.
I, I understand that you, you, you did the bu, proposed budget with a 4% pay increase for our certified and classified employees. I'm still worried about retention. I'm really worried that we're not giving them the pay increase that they really need to stay. I'm, I'm hearing all the time, we're, you know, we're losing from this school and we're losing from this school and I'm not coming back and they're calling it the great resignation. Is there any way we could work this up to maybe 5% and see what those numbers are?
As I said before, this is, this is the board's budget, you know, I'll, you know, I can add what you want in here or take what you want out, um, I can just give you where you're at now. I mean, with the 4% and the 180 positions of growth, um, you're looking at an increase in, uh, an increase in expenditures, budgeted expenditures of $45,943,779. And based on with conservative budget estimates, as best as I can figure until I have hard numbers in the next couple of weeks from, you know, for our preliminary estimates from the state and the property tax, right now, we're standing at a budgeted deficit, you know, for this next fiscal year and this budget that we reviewed this, uh, last week of 40 million, 646, 635. That would be, that's how much your expenditures are over your revenue budgeted. That would be, that's how much your expenditures are over your revenue budgeted. Our current amended budget for this fiscal year has a deficit of $14,679,416. So we're going to be moving from a deficit of 14.6 million to 40.6 million already with the 4% and the new additions of the additional staff.
But we still don't really know how much money we're looking at as far as coming in.
No, and I, my hope is that will come down some. But once again, we still, I'm still waiting on additional expenditures. And this is always like this. I'm going to have a preliminary number for the revenue expenditures for you guys to vote on, just like every year in this on Thursday. But we're still, I'm I'm working with, like I said last week, I'm working with county risk management on the non-health insurance rates as far as property and casualty, auto and things like that. My preliminary, they gave me a preliminary increase of around 19% for that. So once again, I'm going to put an estimate in there. If I don't have that by tomorrow for you folks to vote on, I'll adjust accordingly. But my point is that's still, there's still things that are going to go up as far as the expenditures. And that happens every year. Because once again, this is, as you guys know, this has been through this. It's a, it's breathing document and going all the way up through sometimes towards the middle of June.
Right, and one of the things that makes it so difficult is that we have so many outside the BEP, so many positions outside the BEP. And it's not anything that we're doing that's incorrect. When you, when you start growing like that, I mean, it's not, I mean, I can only imagine what Shelby County and Metro Davidson have outside the BEP.
I just don't want to lose any more of our employees to other surrounding counties. I do know we have lost some. And I was trying to stem the tide, but you've done, you've done so good, really, really good. I would not want your job, but.
Thank you.
Mr. Brody, can we look at what that 5% would look like per Ms. Maxwell's request?
Sure.
And just so the board can have a visual perspective of of what that looks like. And and I'm going to reiterate, you know, with the growing county and you and I, Mr. Brody, have talked. We know with the growing population, it's going to cost more. And I appreciate all that you've done to try to balance this budget and and keep us out of that deficit position. But to be clear, a deficit means we're going to the commission and saying, we don't have enough funding. We need more, which would trigger a tax increase, correct?
Yes.
Yes. And so at some point, I mean, I, we need to let, we need to tell them. We can only do so much with so little for so long. And thank God for Esser monies because it has helped us offset that ask. But I do think we're at a place where we probably, and I'm not telling you anything you don't know. We'll stand with you as we, as we make the ask. But also, can we get that 5% just for visual for the board to see?
It'll be over 3 point, just over 3.2 million from the 1%. As you can see, it's about 13 million on the, for the four on the, I've got this in front of you. This is in that pile of papers.
There's several.
Yes, this is the budget improvements, the two page that we reviewed over when we went through the positions that were going to be added. That's already in this budget, proposed budget. You notice at the top of the page, you see what a 4% would cost. And that would be along with the increase in employer share of Medicare, Social Security, and the pension cost, the increase is that. But the 4%, you're looking at just under $13 million.
Brody, you already have your growth, your final growth payment budgeted in for revenue?
No, sir, I was going to bring that tonight, but I was holding off on, on, we just received that just, well, it was about a month late. But we just received that. And I was going to use some of that for some, what we discussed is some additional costs coming in this year. And but I'm holding off on that till the next board meeting because I worked through a few other budget amendments.
Mr. Brody, is this, are these other packets for information? Are we going to go over them together?
This right here?
Here's some others.
Yes, ma'am. What's in front of you? This is on a, on the board agenda. As you say, what was on your agenda packet online is, of course, this is the same first three items. And I had placed a fourth as a holder for budget amendments. I've expanded on that, you know, to to show these are the actual two amendments that for your consideration on Thursday with the detailed amendments in that packet that I printed out for you.
Or five, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So that, so I apologize if there's confusion with that. The, your printed for the financial items. What you have in front of you printed is the updated than what's on, like I said, for the, what's online. It just says budget amendments. That was a placeholder to let you know these budget amendments are coming.
So these, that this replaces what's in the agenda?
Yes, yes, ma'am. And after this meeting, after this work session, I'll have that uploaded to be updated online as well.
Thank you. Mr. Spurlock, do we want to go over these ones too then?
Absolutely, I didn't see that. It's my fault.
That's okay. And before we move on, is there anything on that item number three? Like I said, I will have the actual hard number as best I can as of Thursday for the revenues expenditures on there that we've discussed to date. I just wanted you folks to see is, you know, you had the request to move the one of the guidance counselors to an AP position. That's been done for Egleville in the budget. That will be before you on Thursday night. I just updated this to this two-page budget improvements to reflect that request of this board in our last meeting.
Thank you. And we spoke this afternoon about the potential flip for another school AP, the same situation. Do we have any additional information on that or are we just going to leave things as they are? Okay, thank you.
All right, number four, budget amendment for fiscal year 21-22, General Purpose School Fund. This budget amendment requests funding for an additional $1,000 to each full-time employee and additional 500 to each part-time employee of Rutherford County School System that is paid from the General Purpose School Fund to be paid at the end of the current school year to compensate for additional duties assigned to our current staff due to low staffing levels as well as the Delta Omicron variants of COVID-19. Funding for this will come from portion of local option sales tax that has been collected over the current fiscal year revenue budget projections. A separate similar amendment will be prepared for employees paid from the School Nutrition Fund for this additional duty pay. And Esser 3.0 amendment will be prepared for Rutherford County School Employees paid from Federal Projects Fund 142. This additional payment is contingent on all the following stipulations being met by the school employee. Employee must be current full-time or part-time, not a PRN, RCS, classified or certified employee, or hired as such no later than January the 3rd of the current school year. Employee cannot have a break in employment at Rutherford County Schools between January the 3rd of 2022 and May the 27th of 2022 in order to receive 100% of this additional pay. The employee remains on an active employee status during the time period available to report for duty as assigned by Rutherford County Schools unless having excused absence or on a paid leave. Any other, any questions on that one, Mr. Brody or board?
Just for clarification, this is going to be, those, those requirements are very similar to what was voted on by the board with the first additional duty stipend back in the beginning of the school year. The, of course, the big difference is we're going to be using available local funding, you know, which we just discussed about the additional sales tax. And also just the, some of the additional funding available because of a positive variance with the staffing, low staffing. So the cafeteria fund, of course, if if this board approves this, I'll, I'll have a subsequent amendment next time for the cafeteria fund to reflect this, whatever this board decides on this. For them, for their employees, they'll have their funding out of the USDA funds from the cafeteria fund. The federal project employees is doing a, running some numbers on them today. And if this board approves this, then some of the remainder of the original $7 million of Esser 3 funds that was earmarked for the first $1,000, I can utilize that remaining funding, you know, that will have there after the first original $1,000, take care of the the federal project employees for whatever this board decides. That'll just be an amendment to Esser 3. That'll cover all of our employees.
Can I ask a question? And when this is a break in employment, what does that mean? So they were let go or they moved from school to school or?
Outside of the RCS entirely. So if one went, good question. If if one, let's say one was an EA at Ketchikan and they moved down to to Holloway. It's, they would still have that, that, they would still be eligible for this. If they just up and left us as a district, then there's a break in that timeframe, they would not be eligible.
If they left and came back. But this does not exclude people who were on medical leave or people who were.
If it's, if it's paid leave, you know, because I don't, and you tell me, I'll get direction from you guys. If it's somebody's on unpaid leave for the entire year is, I didn't think that was what we were looking at. But if it was paid medical leave, that, you know, they wanted to be here, but they're on medical leave. They are eligible for this guideline for that.
Okay. Maternity leave, do we pay for maternity leave?
What's that, ma'am?
If we had an employee that was out for maternity leave, does that disqualify them?
No, ma'am, that would be under, that would be under this right here, approved, approved leave, under the RCS board policies.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying, I appreciate it. Any other questions? Okay.
All right, number five is the amendment to budget for Rutherford County Schools Summer Learning and Summer Bridge Camp. Found on what tab, what tab is that on? You know, well, anyway.
The tab is not, it's not, it's not uploaded yet, sir. It's on the printed version on the desk there.
On January 22nd of 2021, Tennessee General Assembly enacted Tennessee Learning Loss Remediation and Student Acceleration Act. This was to address the learning loss of students due to COVID-19 and related school closures. To this sense of law, all school districts in Tennessee are required to offer learning loss remediation and summer programs for students in grades K-8 starting in the summer of 2021. This General Purpose Fund Amendment has budgeted $5,738,667 in state and federal funding for operations of the state mandated summer camp. The camp will host over 4,200 Rutherford County Schools K-8 students during the month of June 13th. School sites includes, in school sites, and includes funding for the camp staff salaries, SRO, crossing guards, training students. Funding for the school nutrition services is a separate budget amendment. And the school centralized cafeteria fund and funding for the high school summer credit recovery school, along with non-payroll items for the K summer camps, will be accounted for the federal projects fund Esser 3, Esser 3 and IDEA funds.
Thank you. Any questions, members of the board on that item? Okay, no questions, good.
All right, number 17, insurance update.
16, oh, we're in 16.
Excuse me, number 16, facilities. This is our emergency Laverne Middle roof request. Mr. Lee, you're up, buddy.
Last Wednesday, actually last Thursday morning, we got a report from Laverne Middle that they had a roof leak. So we sent our staff down. We spent the last few days determining what the issue is. And your packet was added online. It's a picture of the area of Laverne Middle's roof that the wind got underneath. It actually removed some of the ephes along the face of the building in these areas as well. We've got it temporary so that it won't leak, but we're going to need to do an emergency roof repair to this area. It's a sizable area and we're requesting to use some un, I don't want to use the term needed, leftover funds in some of our smaller 170-set capital projects where things came in under budget and we had a surplus of dollars. I've worked with Doug and I've looked at our numbers and we've got enough line items that we can pull from it to use 177 funds to take care of this. I've got a preliminary budget from our roofing contractor at about 150. And I think the balance will be for ephes repairs once they get finished. So we're asking to, not to exceed $200 so that we can go ahead and get started getting this roof repaired.
$200,000 or is that?
$200,000.
$200.
Would be nice.
That would be a good deal.
It'd be a great deal.
Mr. Lee, is that in the front of the building?
Yes, sir, it's on the front right side. It's the same side the annex on. And ironically, we had a report of some metal trim coming off the annex. So it all ties together. I mean, from a storm standpoint, we didn't originally associate a leak in the main building with the trim and stuff that had blown off that was causing a leak in the new annex. But now it all, they're on the same side and they're associated together. So that's the side that the building took the wind.
Wicked wind.
Scary. I, I have a question about insurance as it pertains to storm damage. Do we as a system have that? And is it a higher threshold for it to be activated? At what point can we utilize for projects like this?
If I'm not mistaken, it's around 250,000. We're self-insured because of the size that we are. That's our threshold. So up until that point, for lack of a better term, we're on the hook to pay out of, out of pocket. Once we go over that, then the insurance does step in.
Okay, thank you. Next item.
All right, Walter Hill Playground Request. Walter Hill Principal Laura Heath has submitted a request to install additional recreational equipment on playground area. The request has been reviewed by the engineering construction and has been approved. Cost for the request is $7,209 and it will be funded through the PTO.
No question, is this something that we would normally take care of ourselves under the capital projects or?
We are currently spending our playground funds that we do at all our schools at Walter Hill right now. These items are in addition to what we provide at each elementary school. So this, this would not be part of our standard thing. They are getting that now. And we've actually modified that in the last year or two because we've had a rise in our sped students with disabilities. And we did not have an adequate number of accessible apparatuses in our playgrounds. And we've redesigned them to to take that into account. Sometime in the past, that there were, those were things that the PTOs and things were having to purchase. This is not, we're taking care of all of that now. We have the ADA compliance, we have additional things for those students to enjoy. And these are in addition to what we provide everybody.
Typically, when you come back in and replace some of this, what's that cost per school?
Well, this year's cost is about $325,000 per elementary school.
So we're talking about a pretty good chunk of chunk.
I'm expecting that number to probably be 30% more next year.
What are we using currently for the the base of the?
Well, we've tried a lot of things.
Tried everything.
We've tried everything that that new has come out. There was the federal dollars that came out some years ago, the rubber. They actually went in and put concrete, then they put the rubber. It's almost like a track surface type material. It's very expensive and it's very expensive to maintain. And we've gotten to the point where we just, we just can't afford two years of doing that. So we continue to research what we came to the conclusion of two years ago. When we do the playground, one of the things that you have, we use mulch for a number of years. The board bought it and then they, there was a change where the schools were responsible for replacing their own mulch in the playgrounds. That's very difficult for a lot of our elementary schools to raise that kind of money because you're looking to $6,000 to $8,000 per school. We continue to, look, right now, we are using, when we replace it, we actually install sod around the entire playground area. We use an ADA compliant rubber mat that allows the grass to grow through it. It provides that shock absorbency that's required and it also is accessible for wheelchair. The other good thing is because it is that rubber pad, we don't wear down the holes where the kids swing. We always saw the dirt, mud, holes, but those are, those do not. We always saw the dirt, mud, holes, but those are, those do not come back through this, uh, padding. Uh, and then we're able to overseed it every fall, which gets us through the winter. Uh, so, so that, the last three or four years, it does cost us a little bit more money. Not near as much money as it did for the rubber pads and the schools are no longer having to come up with the money for the mulch. So it's kind of a win-win-win, uh, for everybody and it seems to be working really well.
Any other questions? Okay.
Now the insurance update.
No insurance.
So next Thursday, we have our meeting at the courthouse. Um, promised to be a very long, uh, meeting to go through all the changes and, uh, updates with us moving to the state plan.
Thank you. Director's update.
Uh, I'm going to go over a House Bill nineteen forty-four, Senate Bill nineteen forty-four, obscene obscenity, how it impacts us, it, once it's passed, and I'll have Dr. Sullivan follow up on some things. Uh, this amendment requires local Board of Education Governor Body of Public Charter School to determine if the material is obscene, harmful to minors, no later than the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board or governing body after a thirty-day period. If, uh, the material is obscene or harmful to minors, then the material must be permanently removed from the school library of each, uh, school governed by the local Board of Education or the governing body of the public charter school. If the local Board of Education or the governing body of the public charter school determines that the material is appropriate for students, then, uh, the, then the material must return, be returned to each school library from which it was removed by the respective director upon the local Board of Education's or governing body of, of the public charter school's determination that the material is appropriate for the students or at the end of the thirty-day period identify in which whichever is earlier, is earlier. Basically, if this is found to be obscene and is found in the schools after this period of time, then we can be, according to this, uh, the, the actual commissioner can say, um, rule us out of compliance and take additional, uh, pursue different, uh, things against the, the L E A. I say all this because I know some of you have children in school. I've got two grandkids in school and I'll have another one come in school. And I think there's no one wants anything that's obscene in our, in our libraries. However, we also understand that, uh, we can't always know all this. Uh, we've got forty-nine thousand kids, uh, fifty-one libraries. Uh, so, you know, when I look for something, uh, you know, and somebody brings it to me, we're gonna take care of it. As the director of school, you're responsible for those things. But I don't ever go out, I got you kind of thing. I don't go out and say, I got you, so you've got this in your library. Uh, you know, because that's not helping anyone. The, the purpose, and I'll let Dr. Sullivan expand on this, uh, the purpose is to get it, if it's, if it's obscene, to get it out of our libraries. Dr. Sullivan?
So we actually have a longstanding policy, four-point-four-oh-three, that is reconsideration of instructional materials and textbooks. Um, that goes through if there's ever any type that a parent wants, or, or student for that matter, wants to file for reconsideration, we have a process. Uh, we go through all of our principals. We're reminded of that again over the last couple of days. Uh, they go through, their principal notifies our instruction department and then we have a policy that goes through step by step. Um, other school districts use it as well, who sits on the committee, how long a item has to stay for review, what happens to the material during the review, how long you have to give an item. And it's, we have all those documents for four, and again, that's in four-point-four-oh-three. We also have another board policy that follows that with four-point-eight-zero-one, that if we were to have a controversial material that a parent requests a student not be required, that we give them an alternate material and they're not, uh, held in any way punitive from an academic or behavioral standpoint. I say all that for really two reasons. When we think about controversial and look at instructional, we have two things. We have library and then we have textbooks. And so when we're looking at library, um, I talked to Marcy Lehman, who is our P D person, but really helps lead our media specialist as well. And I asked her, I said, walk me through, I know it from a principal's perspective, but walk me through it from an instruction perspective. How do we get new books that we want in our libraries? A lot of them, she said, come from students and then some from parent recommendations. We also then have several lists, um, from Follett, H W Wilson and the School Journal of Library that has searches that they put out. Um, however, when we're looking at young adult books or even just children's books, there are so many titles that are published every year, they're going to be books that we have to reconsider and that's what this policy is for. Um, the other part of that is textbooks. Uh, textbooks have a huge, not only the huge expense, it is a huge portion of what we're using for instructional materials. I wanted to call just a couple state laws around textbooks to your attention and because we are about, for several of our board members, it's about to be the first big, major adoption we've gone through, um, in the last three years. The first one is, uh, and these are all Tennessee code annotated, forty-nine dash six dash two, uh, two-two-zero-zero. And that sets out the Textbook and Instructional Materials Quality Commission. Um, and that's at the state level. Um, it consists of ten people and they're in the process of setting forth textbook adoptions. From there, uh, really the next one was following down, forty-nine-six, twenty-two-zero-one. And that talks about, let me pull that up real quick, and twenty-two-zero-two, I'm sorry, twenty-two-zero-two. And I'll just read the first sentence. It's the duty of the commission to prepare a list of standard editions of textbooks and instructional materials that cover a complete program of study for approval by the State Board of Education for use in the public schools. If we do not use those, so we're in the middle of an adoption list through math. Uh, we covered that, I think, two weeks ago. We will have our official adoption list for math in October. If we do not follow those, twenty-two-zero-six says, "An L E A shall not use or permit to be used in any school, any textbooks and instructional materials upon subject to the exclusion of textbooks and instructional materials, um, that have not been approved by the State Board of Education." And so I say all that to say that we have all of these materials that we are using. Um, and we want to make it open with our parents. Again, I have two kids in our school system as well. And if we have materials that we need to bring forth, uh, unfortunately, all textbooks are not written for the state of Tennessee. Uh, but we can only adopt what textbooks are on our adoption list. You can look at Florida right now and see they've pushed out a lot of textbooks as well. I imagine we are going to follow a very similar process in the state of Tennessee. And so we've already started looking at some of those, what are some items that we're using now to kind of anticipate what are some of the books that may not be on our math adoption list. And so when we hear conversations about what is going on, just know that as a, as a local Board of Education, as educators in Rutherford County, whether we like the curriculum or not, we have to go with our state board list. Uh, we don't have that option as we, as Dr. Chastain talked about with waivers. We don't have an option to go for waivers when it comes to curriculum materials. And happy to answer any questions about.
This bill will, will become a law. That's when you will get the S B A and, and put some language in there. It's hard to scrub all these materials, uh, because they're not printed for Tennessee. I know it's hard to believe, but it's New York, California, places like that, because there's a larger volume. That's where they sell them at. So it is difficult. And I will give kudos to the instructional department for the previous couple of years. We've gone through, we've noticed, and even the adoption, this does not, this is not gonna fly. With this school board, it's not gonna fly with our parents and it shouldn't. And, and they've made, uh, made some changes, so kudos to you guys.
You can look at what Williamson County is going through. That was a, an option for us to adopt at the E L A level and we chose not to even bring it forth because we knew that was not something we wanted from a committee to bring forth to the board. So we just have to go with what we can choose.
Thank you. Did you give us that law?
Uh, the, the, it's, it's, it's a bill currently, uh, H B nineteen forty-four and student, uh, Senate Bill nineteen forty-four.
Where is that? Is it, has it passed the House?
It's, it's, it's still in, uh, going through the process, but it's been approved by the, you know, the, right before it goes to the full assembly.
Thank you. So... That feels like a really big task if this law goes through. Uh, we just recently had an, um, a, a, an event where Ms. Sharp read, uh, or had brought a book that was really rather inappropriate to be in our libraries. Um, what are we gonna do? How do we, do we have a plan to look at? Can we talk to publishers? We certainly want to make sure that we aren't affording access to our students.
Right.
Even.
So we went, um, back and looked at that. That text, I believe, was at seven, eight of our schools, uh, one school it's lost at and another school it's not. Um, it has been checked out less than five times, which still regardless, um, doesn't make it appropriate or not appropriate. That's just kind of the, what we look at. Uh, when those are brought to us, we just need to know about them. Again, it's the number of titles that are, are put forth every single year. Um, that series was a New York Times bestseller, so a media special is gonna see, New York Times bestseller. A child is interested in it, that's probably a purchase that I need to make if it's on one of those lists. And again, those lists are published nationwide, not necessarily for the, the interests of Tennessee. And so that is the whole reason for our policies to be there. Um, it is classified as juvenile fiction fourteen plus. There's a, again, a series of five. I'm not sure that I would agree with that, but that's how it's classified.
I would encourage you to put something in place with the librarians where they don't have to read the book, but they can read the reviews of the book and that could go a long way of, of solving some of that.
Yeah, agree completely.
So... So our plan is do the best we can, but it's impossible to read the entire collection, but?
Right. And the best part, and I hate to say the best part, most of our schools are, you come into this biggest portion is when you're opening a brand-new school.
Right.
When you're opening a brand-new school, every title is reviewed. Um, and opening a brand-new school, we tried to go through every title because once it comes to the shelves, this policy comes into place. Um, before it comes to the shelves, then it can be removed very quickly, very easily. And so for us, it's going to be truly working with our principals and working with our media specialists around making sure the appropriateness. Um, and then also going through, there's a, an option that we can have in Skyward and I think this is a, a very easy thing, that if a parent just on a checklist says, you know, I don't want my child to be, to check out this series of books, um, for example. Um, that is something that pops up as a note in our Destiny Manager as soon as a, a child tries to check that out. The media special says, nope, you can't check this book out.
Okay.
We've had that in place, um, for years. I think that's something that we just have to have an open communication and dialogue with our parents that this exists, uh, there are going to always be texts that are published and we just have to be aware of what needs to be there. And if it's a controversial one or one, one of its controversial, we probably don't need to have it there. But if it's one that age appropriateness can be debated, not necessarily this one, but just in general, then we need to have that opt-out for parents.
But if you just, if you read the back of that book, it really didn't say anything, but it is Fifty Shades, Game of Thrones. And there's five, there's five in that series. So, you know, when I spoke with the librarian who opened a new school recently, anything that was on the bestsellers list was just put in that box and it's box A, box B, box C, and whatever the money we have to allocate, that's what they do, they just buy the whole thing. And I get that they don't have time to read them all, but we've got to do better.
And I will agree. I will say one thing that we budgeted for one of our new schools. So media specialists, when they're opening a brand-new school, are usually only budgeted about five extra days to work. And so they're usually hired in March or April. I've been working with Mr. Bowdery, the last couple of years in opening a new school, we've actually allocated a couple additional days so that they had time to truly look at that list to see.
Your, your reviews are not gonna tell you what's in there.
Yeah, you are exactly right.
And maybe depending on parents, I mean, if, as we build this relationship and we'll talk a little bit about the parental roundtable, but as we build this relationship with parents, even if it's not in our collection, if they, they can contact us or, Ms. Ridley, I hate to add more to your plate, but, and, and inquire about what our collection holds and, and they can weigh in on those. So, you know, maybe it's gonna be a group effort, but I don't know that the law is a bad thing. I just think, how do we manage such large collections in our schools with what's already on the shelf? That's a big task.
I think you're exactly correct. The, I think there's nothing wrong with the bill and as it passes into law. It's, it's how we address it, you know? I think, uh, communication is always the best way to, to handle things. Sometimes we prefer to use a different platform. So if we can do it more direct communication, uh, maybe that would be, uh, something that would be very easily.
Yeah. And we even, we have an entire policy and complaint procedure. If there were something that we're taught that's one of the topics we can't teach, we have that whole procedure. We just need to make sure people are aware of it.
Right.
And so we get that.
Okay.
I mean, just, this is sure volume we're talking about. It's not like you can just say, okay, we're gonna have five people go audit the library. I mean, it's just sure volume you're talking about, so we have to depend on those folks to help.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, really, we need to partner with the parents. And get them to pay attention and help.
But I am going to remind you all, there is a policy that should be followed if there's a book challenge. They should follow the policy so that will, it will be done correctly. That's why.
And this policy is not new. It is actually, its first issue date was one fifteen, two thousand nine, so this is not a new.
It is not a new policy, I know that.
Thank you for pointing that out. We appreciate it. Right? Anything else, Mr. Spurlock?
No ma'am.
All right. Um, next item, Tennessee Legislative, Ms. Maxwell. Thank you. Okay. General discussion items, any members?
I have two things I'd like to bring up. One is, I received an email this afternoon, I think y'all may have too, and I just, I was baffled because I just, I guess, I don't understand what a four-by-four schedule is. Okay. I'm sure you got that too. Uh, I, the gentleman, uh, seems concerned that his child is going to, uh, not have the same opportunities regarding some of the classes because of the change of schedule. And I've never heard four-by-four, so I didn't even know what it was, so I'm asking you.
First of all, let's set up the, how, Eagleville's a little bit different.
Yeah.
In terms of their number of high school students and also, you know, I think it's, uh, their fine arts is one of the biggest issues. So I'm gonna set that up for Dr. Sullivan to talk about why we allowed them to do the four-by-four block and.
And if you could just explain what that is. I mean, I'm not saying it's bad, I just, I don't know what he's talking about.
So we have a, a couple of, really the virtual school in Holloway are able to operate on a little bit different. So when you're looking at your students being able to take a couple of courses at one time and earn that credit instead of earning seven credits, they can now earn eight credits under four-by-four. Uh, Mr. The principal was here just a little while ago. He left so that he could go address the situation and make sure that no opportunity from a student based on a schedule change, a schedule should never dictate opportunities for students.
Yes.
That, that's just a holistic belief, it should never, there's always a way to work with a student to make their schedule operate the way they need to and that's where he went to go address that.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
That's great.
I will add, the, the reason why we do not do this in your large, comprehensive high schools is because it will drive your operational costs up. Now, it's, it would be a good, now here, then you start getting into this. A kid can, can get eight credits a year and it only takes twenty-three in the state, uh, with us, twenty-two in the state of Tennessee, one additional for us to graduate. You could say, well, we're gonna get them out of there a lot quicker, but that's, you know, that operational cost will skyrocket. So that's the reason why we, we don't do a four-by-four system-wide.
Thank you for that explanation.
My second is, Woody had a wonderful retreat and we, where we talked about, and one of the things I think we threw out there was the idea of having maybe a daycare, providing that. I know we haven't really had a chance to even, even look at that. I was hoping that maybe we could perhaps look at some, the city, the city school's daycare program, uh, some surrounding counties that also offer that, maybe, uh, similar to maybe go out and look at these facilities and see what, what it would take. If we had a chance to maybe, um, survey our, our teachers, would they be interested in, in how many kids we would be looking at, how many parents would be wanting to use this? I, I would like to just kind of at least start the process of looking at this because I really feel that like this would be something very, very beneficial for our, and retaining our teachers.
Ms. Maxwell, they were talking about a daycare for their school, not parents. The one that talked to me was a daycare put in for their school employees. And that's what Williamson County has. Yeah, if you're, Smyrna High's the one that came to me and talked to me about it. And we've talked, we've also mentioned it to Tamara Blair, haven't we? And I think it's something we need to look at. Um, Mr. Spurlock brought up when we talked about this, he said, talk about a, a good incentive and a retention. I mean, parents are paying two thousand dollars a month for two children. And if we had something that we could offer them in the schools, I think it would be, I think it would elevate us to, out of a one through ten, oh, let's just say a twenty. It's something that I would love to look at over the next year with Ms. Maxwell. Mm-hmm.
We used to have, um, childcare as part of a C T E program and a lot of those play.
and a lot of those playgrounds are being dismantled currently at some of our comprehensive high schools, because they're no longer in use.
Can we stop?
It's still at Riverdale.
Still at Smyrna. I mean, this just came up recently, but I think it's something we really need to look at.
To be removed.
Pardon me?
I can look at slowing it down.
Could you do that for us while we explore this possibility?
It looks like we already have, like, some of the groundwork that we would need for this at some of the high schools, at least three of them, that I was thinking.
It was a CTE program, I know, but that's not what we're talking about at this point.
I understand that, but I'm saying that...
We're looking at a daycare.
That was there, yeah.
That facility could be used.
Right, that's what I think. I think it'd be great.
I'm going to step out on another limb. A number of these high schools are being slated for additions. So, are we going to add that space? Because currently, there is no space at these schools for that type of a program.
Yes, there is. They have, I know at Riverdale, she's teaching as a profession right now, but she has the space in that room.
So, you're going to leave it alone? You don't want anything else done to it?
We didn't say that.
That's my question.
Right, but we don't know yet. You know, it's kind of like...
I'm not putting any pressure, but tomorrow, I start design meetings with the architectural firm to go forward at these schools.
I don't anticipate, at least at Riverdale, I don't anticipate you would have to do anything additional regarding, that had nothing to do with the additions. I'm just saying, we've got the space here. They've got the little playground. They've got the apparatus to start a daycare there, and perhaps at another school as well. And that's why I was thinking, let's just put the brakes on taking away anything that would, I don't want to have to repurchase things that we need. I think it's, I think this would be a very good thing to retain a lot of our teachers. I think they'd think twice on leaving teaching if they could get quality childcare.
Is this covering the cost, or in charging on what it costs to run the daycare?
It's a, there is a charge, yes, but it's nominal. It's not $2,000.
It needs to pay for itself.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. We don't know what we're talking about yet, Mr. Lee, but we want to go look.
We want to go look and see how the successful school districts have done it.
I apologize for not bringing this up sooner, because this just got voted on by Community Care Rutherford County, just right down the street here from Riverdale. The county is going to, or is issuing, is looking at issuing a $4 million loan to actually expand the daycare facilities at the county nursing home. They have an actual licensed daycare. That will add over 100 seats for daycare, and they've already just, my teacher was looking at this, saying, "The school system and the county employees would have first shot at this."
Would they really?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome.
So, that's, I'd like y'all to see the drawings for that, because that's actually in the works right now. And that's, we, Dr. Anthony, I've been discussing that. Once again, this is preliminary, but they could, if the county commission approves that loan, then that could be breaking ground pretty soon. And that would be something for this side of the county, like Riverdale, Oakland.
I don't know if it'd be advantageous if you lived up in the north end, though.
You might have to look, you just have to look at different locations, how that works out.
Like I said, I would be willing, with Ms. Brighton, to sit down and kind of study this, maybe go visit some and see what we've got that will work. That is good news to hear about, our school system being able to use that.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, for helping.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Okay. Anybody else have anything? I do want to touch on one thing before we leave. Last night, we held our first parental roundtable. This board approved. Thank you, Mr. Evans, and all the staff for all that you did to make it successful. Laverne High hosted us. We had a pretty good turnout, I think, for a first time. Great questions asked. It was a really great environment. And we are looking at doing another one in May. I don't think we're going to do them over the summer, for obvious reasons. So, we have an opportunity to do one more. Mr. Evans, do you want to talk a little bit about it with me?
Sure. So, Ms. Johnson has already spoken to the principal at Rockville Elementary, who would like to host it. She volunteered to. So, the next event will be on Monday, May 2, at 6:00 p.m., if that still works for the board. We can start pushing Rockville Elementary on Monday, May 2, 6:00 p.m., until we're finished, and we will start announcing that this week.
Wonderful.
That's what the board wishes.
I appreciate all the help, and then we'll send out, again, question, opportunities for parents to ask questions. We'll cover key points, and will we be putting up on our website our answers to the questions that were asked? Or how have we decided we're going to get that information out to parents, or have we decided?
Figuring out some of this as I go along, to be honest, but I do have a recording of last time, audio recording. It's decent quality, and I'm going through and trying to pick out the questions that were asked. Some were statements, not questions, but if there were questions asked, and then what the answers were. It's not going to be necessarily verbatim, but just trying to summarize the question and the answer, just so that people can see what happened the first time.
Appreciate that.
And Ms. Hopkins is actually preparing minutes, so that the board will approve of the next meeting, which is just your standard kind of minutes that we do at a meeting, but it won't include the Q and A. That'll be separate, but it'll be available on the website.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. We appreciate you being there and doing that. So, excited to see how this evolves. Got some great parental feedback. Thank you to members of the board for being there. Look forward to seeing how this unfolds. The other item I wanted to touch on was the director's search. We are still, every, we're still working through this process. I do believe, Mr. Reed, have we called a special-called meeting? Thursday at 4:30, members of the board, right before our board meeting, we will hold a special-called meeting to discuss. We've been asked by TSB to look at the salaries, or look at a salary window, and so, we'll have a conversation on Thursday, special-called meeting. Parents, if you have any questions at all about this process, please call a board member, feel free to call us, or Tennessee School Board Association. Anytime we're going to address anything with the director's search, we will likely host a special-called meeting. We don't want these items to get lost in an agenda, so we want to be fair and transparent, and we invite our families and community to come and participate with us. So, if there is no further business this evening, we are adjourned.